Welcome to Park County's own Hurricane Hill Botanicals. Where it's been said you'll find the best handcrafted soap on the planet. In addition to that, we've got a great selection of essential oils, body care products, even CBD products. Can't miss out on our big selection of herbal teas, smudge sticks, even incense. Check our website for hours.
We're gonna have you take care of this right off the bat.
Hey Nick.
Hey, how's it going?
Good.
So you got a few bids?
Yes.
One or two.
I'll be like helping you today.
Yeah.
I have one on Friday.
You got a letter up there or something?
I do.
Who are you talking next to?
Sorry, I call that whenever I like.
My knife.
That one was so unlean in the truck.
You sharpening that knife to get on this huh?
Huh?
You sharpening that knife?
I got like four of them. That one was plain in the truck. Need sharpeners. G and J Building Demolition Project.
Who is it?
G and J.
Uh, that's just what they named it. Jackson Jacks.
Oh.
Who's the company?
Um, McCullough Excavating. They bid it at seventy-nine thousand eight eighty-five.
Hey Lisa.
Hey.
Seventy-nine eight eighty-five Nick.
Correct.
Come on, if you wanna, I'll put a mark in and then I'll get with you.
Alright. Um, Dore and Associates.
Who?
Dore and Associates, D O R E and Associates.
Got all those printed.
That's on the wall.
Yeah.
On the last page.
I think so. Two-hundred-nine thousand one thirty-eight.
Two oh nine?
One thirty-eight.
Two oh nine one thirty-eight, okay.
But, a lot of that was taxes. That was one fifty-six seven eighty-five, but state of Michigan taxes were another fifty-two thousand three fifty-three.
They're out of Michigan?
Yeah.
That's interesting. Taxes.
Two oh nine one thirty-eight.
Yes. S and T Excavating.
S and G?
Those are always kind of like in the slot.
I've been told that twice tonight. And yes, I as in Boy Scouts and yes, I know that.
You have your pocket knife, pocket knife shift, do ya?
But once you get to be an adult, like I told John earlier, you can kinda do whatever you want because you're putting the bills to cut yourself. Hundred-and-ten thousand.
Even?
Yes. So one thing about this job I don't like is that one of these things. Yes, if we do it enough, I'll get better at it.
There you go.
Uh, this is, um, Dennis Trucking Company Incorporated. Seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Column Excavating.
Column.
Column, C O L L O N, Excavating. Ninety-seven thousand ninety dollars.
Who's this one?
Canizer Excavating. Seventy-seven thousand nine hundred dollars.
He didn't say that you're okay. You're okay.
This is Crane Excavating.
Crane?
Eighty-six thousand five hundred dollars. It has multiple parts to it though.
Then it's probably more.
Yeah, I don't see it.
Well.
Hundred-and-four thousand nine sixty-eight twenty-five.
One oh four?
Nine sixty-eight twenty-five.
Okay.
And who was that for?
That was Crane.
Crane total.
Yeah.
So it looks like Canizer's lowest at this point, correct? Everybody looking at it.
Seventy-seven nine.
Seventy-seven nine, wanna review that package, make sure there's nothing that we.
Yeah.
Before we.
Well, I'd probably have Jeff look in detail, but just make sure they all comply before you actually.
Well, I'm just talking to a price. I mean, make sure, somebody darned pages there.
Okay.
Let's make sure that is. What's that?
McCullough at seventy-nine eight eighty-five.
Seventy-seven nine.
No, seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine eight eighty-five.
Yeah, I was real close.
So Crane is one oh four nine sixty-eight twenty-five, for sure.
Crane is.
If you want me to look back through the other ones.
Well, call, just make sure we have, make sure we have the lowest bid with Canizer.
I mean, you'll look up, you'll review.
What Roger and I'll do is we'll meet and go to Canizer and Dennis. And make a recommendation back to you guys.
Right, that's what I was saying.
Okay, so.
Before you award it.
Well, we're gonna, I was gonna say, we'll have Jeff and Roger look it over.
So we got, we've got, we're gonna look over, uh, Canizer and Column. Or I mean Dennis. Canizer and Dennis.
I'd probably have them look at all of them, just to make sure.
Yeah, we'll give you a little.
Excel sheet.
Well, okay.
We're not gonna award this tonight, so.
Well, I appreciate you opening them first. Thank you.
Uh, uh, okay, so, so our timeline here.
Yep, I'm gonna, supposed to meet with Roger tomorrow, so we can get your recommendation. When would you like to, uh, meet? Would you like to postpone it to the next meeting?
I hate to put it off two weeks.
Or would you like to have a special meeting?
Hate to put it off two weeks. I mean, it, it time is.
Yep.
We, we, we could probably get him a jury together to do something. I want you guys to look it over. And how, you think three of us can get together at least? I'm usually available for a few minutes. Steve, I'm. Uh, Lily usually, you two of the guys are more difficult out of town to.
I mean, I can do, I mean, we can either do it one early morning.
Well, I do early morning, yeah. Heck, doesn't matter to me.
But yeah, I'd like to get it going, so.
Totally your call. I'm available whenever.
I'd say, well, call a special meeting whenever you guys get us the information, so. I mean, we'll let, I'm assuming we'll let you know. I mean, whatever, whichever way we go, we're gonna have a special meeting, so.
Seventy-seven, uh, nine's a low bid right now, right?
Seventy-seven nine was the lowest.
And then Dennis was seventy-nine five.
And McCullough was a third, seventy-nine eight eighty-five. But yeah, we gotta make sure they match the specs. That's the big thing, right? Okay, hey, thanks for putting in the bids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
So I'm sorry.
Nathaniel was with S and G.
Okay.
We ready to move on?
Yeah.
Who's the other guy?
You got the four.
The other guy's, um, egg.
Is that it? I thought it was it. That's it? Okay, now we got.
I have two things I'd like to talk about. One I didn't mention is the Main Street schedule. For this year, I just thought I'd bring a copy of that, so everybody knows what's going on. I don't know how that usually works. But we usually coordinate with the, the county and with the town to let you know which days we're doing everything. There's two things that I wanted to mention briefly, actually. The Cruisin', which is scheduled for June fourth.
Oh, wow.
We're concerned about when Market Street's gonna be closed. Because we usually park the food vendors on that side. I don't know if it will be closed on that day or not, or the construction.
No.
Are they not? Okay, just wanna make sure about that. That's the first thing. Second thing is there's a new item on here on July thirtieth called the Block Party. Main Street had a pretty successful year last year, coming out of COVID, and we wanted to add one more event. For the summer, so we decided to have just the Town Block Party. It'll probably be on Jefferson. We'll have more details after our next meeting. We've got basic.
Say that again, Jeff, you're doing what?
We have a block party scheduled.
Yes.
Here we tried Thursdays.
Yes, so what, what, what's the timeframe on that?
It's gonna be July thirtieth, uh, Saturday.
We may be under construction on Jefferson. We talking from, from thirty-sixth to York?
Right.
We're hopeful.
Yeah, I'm very sure.
We're optimistic.
Jefferson construction.
We're hopeful we'll have construction going on there and have it done by September something. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's. Hey.
Because I'm between Jefferson and York.
Between Jefferson and York.
On, on north, on the north side of thirty-sixth. Just, uh.
Jefferson thirty-sixth.
Just.
Or York and thirty-sixth.
Yeah, just New York and thirty-sixth.
Okay, now this will be between Ohio and High Street.
Oh, well, you'll be.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Okay, okay.
That's not a problem.
No, that's not a problem.
But that's new. The other thing that is, that is new this year, which we don't have on the schedule yet, is we are trying to coordinate a couple of bus tours coming in from out of town. We've got, um, the first one's gonna be coming out of Crown Point, the second one I think is out of Peoria, and the third one out of Dayton, Ohio. We're trying to sponsor a come and shop Rockville for a day. So for a hundred dollars or seventy-five dollars, they'll get in the bus in the morning, we'll bring them down here. They'll shop for the day. We'll kinda meet them and greet them and have a video for them to see. And that's tentatively scheduled for the sixteenth of June, the fourteenth of July, and we think the twenty-fifth of August. Coordinating that with the bus companies right now, we don't have that definite. I don't think the town has to be involved in that at all. Because it'll just be, I mean, um, July fourteenth. So that's just the schedule, so you know that about what's going on.
Any, any dates there that, that we need to close streets? Uh, obviously, the June fourth Cruisin' and July thirtieth Block Party, if that happens. Can, can you guys get with us and?
Yep.
And, uh, R P D, so we.
I don't know, who usually coordinates with that?
Both of us.
Okay.
Yeah, if you can just send it out to both, we'll make sure we have things.
We'll make sure. Like I said, we have our March meeting in two weeks and we will have more detail then.
After we place block off, the towns for the bus part of the town?
No, the bus will probably, we're not sure where we'll drop them off. We're gonna probably right across from the thirty-sixth. Just drop them off, people out there. We'll have people there to meet them and give them tours. We're, we're, this is kinda new for us, but the intention is to bring people in for a day to shop and hopefully to give them enough information so they'll come back with their families to, to stay a lot longer. The bus tours that we've had before when we had the jail, the comment we always get is, we wish we had more time here. We get that from people coming all the time. So this is Harvey Morris who owns the Owl's Nest, is kinda spearheading this. And we think it's profitable as well as a good idea to generate some more business for the retail down here. Any questions about the schedule or anything? Before I get into the real stuff? That you are so excited about that? Um, parking enforcement. I've got two things to hand out. These are, uh, software. I went and we've done some research. It took a little bit longer than I would have hoped, but, um, Greencastle. I met with the enforcement officer finally at Greencastle. And just to give you, I've got a, there's a sheet there with a, with a brief summary on it. It actually is a revenue stream for them. I can't quite get how much. Um, but I did do enough research to find out what it would cost us and what it would take. And, and I, what I need is direction as, as to what I do next, so I can just leave this here with you and you decide, or I can take this to a public safety meeting next, if you think that's appropriate. Um, what they have, they have one enforcement officer who does, I guess, triple or quadruple duty, who also is a probation officer and some other things. But her name is Alicia, and she says it takes her about two hours a day to survey the two-hundred or so parking spots that they have around the square. She does a first pass in the first forty minutes, the second pass takes her about sixty minutes. I figure with the eighty or so spots we have, it would probably take someone twenty to twenty-five minutes to make that, those rounds. The software is a self-contained system. It's a scanner, software, and a printer. So they actually have a printer, they zap the license plate, they come back within two hours or after two hours, they zap the license plate again. If it's in violation, it immediately prints out a ticket with the self-adjusted envelope and that gets sent out. Their fines are fifteen dollars in the two-hour parking violation. They've got, I didn't know you can't back into a spot in Indiana.
Really?
It's illegal to back into a parking spot in Indiana.
Yep.
So those trucks and cars you see parked backwards in the spots are, we could technically give them tickets. Which I guess, I'm sure we get tickets all the time. Oh, antique kids. Uh-oh. Um, and she said, she couldn't give me exact numbers, but she said they've currently got about eight thousand dollars outstanding in parking tickets. Um, the real, the only issue she had was the, the lack of enforcement on the, um, city attorney and the police. Because if people don't pay their tickets, that's when it becomes a problem. The majority of people do pay their tickets on time, but if they don't pay, then you gotta send a warning notice and then you gotta take it to court. I don't think Greencastle really follows up with that, after that, but they get enough revenue to pay for the officer to, to do that. You've got a list of the software, you've got the code on there. It's just under twenty thousand dollars to buy a single scanner with a printer and everything in there. It's, it's kinda a neat system. So again, I don't know where you want me to go with this after that. If you want me to meet with public safety and have them look at it, if you want me to meet with the police and have them look at it. Um, but my obligation was to come up with what we thought would be a solution. And, and I don't know what's gonna happen with the parking lot. You're gonna build one by the insurance company, but I don't know how we restrict that too, so people don't leave abandoned cars there for days at a time. Without taking them, because technically you could park there all night, right?
Well, technically, we could probably put, come up with some ordinance to, to, to deal with that.
But you gotta enforce it.
Haven't got that far yet.
But, so you've got the information, um, you can look that over and let me know what you'd like me to do next.
Well.
Well, I can tell you, I mean, I would like for you to talk to the safety board.
Okay.
I mean. And we can get together as a board, I guess, and, once they've mauled it over and.
I think what I discovered is it's a lot easier to do than I initially thought. You know, with this software, this equipment, um, it seems like it would pay for itself after a while. But again, it's the issue of do we really wanna pursue this and do it or not?
What's most cost, cost effective thing I've seen so far?
Yeah, the very last page, I think, is the quote that I got from the company.
Well, I'd say this, unless you're gonna go to war with the county courthouse as far as their parking, I don't see how you're gonna be able to enforce parking along the square whatsoever. Would be my opinion. You've got some majority of people parking around the square.
Well, you know, we have issues too. I mean, just like Nick has brought up before, what if somebody's over there in his office on, on extended business? Visit? You know, I mean, there, there are issues there, I guess, uh. It, 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 there's just a lot of. Issues, I mean, so, one per, a person coming in for retail is one thing. A person coming in that worked, a business owner, employee that works on the square and parks obviously eight hours a day, that's, that's the serious offender that we need to try to address. And you have the courthouse employees.
They have apartments too, where the people.
Then you have the apartment people.
Yeah, I did look into the, you know, the courthouse employees, and you actually can, as a condition of their employment, not that anyone would wanna do this, but you can, as a condition of their employment, require them to park in an external lot somewhere. And if they refuse to do that and violate that, you can't fire them. And I don't know if we would ever do that.
Well, that's.
That would be county.
That's county. That's county.
That'd be county.
Well, it's a start. We've got some good information. We've got numbers we can work with. Uh, we, obviously, there's a few more groups who probably need to be into this, one being the county and, and, and the people that hire those employees. You know, we are going to have an option for parking, uh, soon, just off the square, uh, we hope. Uh, so, there's a lot, lot, lot of moving parts right now. Uh, and, and again, you have the issue with people that, that the apartment folks, and gosh, they, they live there. What do you do with them?
Well, on the Market Street, there are two whole lanes of unlimited parking. It's just the outer side that's, two hours.
Okay.
You understand that? I mean, the two-hour parking is only on the outer perimeter.
Outside.
The inside.
Inside is not.
And there actually is plenty of parking on the inside.
Okay, well.
For employees as well.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Yeah.
I mean, they could even, they could ask. I, I don't anticipate the county would enforce, but, you know, there's usually plenty of room on the south side. You could request that employees stay on a couple of sides as opposed to all the way around, but.
Well, I guess I would say that my other, and this is as a business owner, not as your attorney, would be that why are we making regulations based on problems on one side of the square when the rest of the side of the square is not complaining?
Well.
I'm not sure which, we've got three sides that complain.
Who complained on the south side?
Not the three sides, the east, west, and north.
West side's not complaining about parking.
Um, the jeweler is.
I talked to the jeweler myself.
I went and talked to Ross. One of his complaints was the flower shop, that they park in front of his store.
He told me that he didn't want any regulations made whatsoever based on his opinion, is what he told me.
Well, you know, obviously, this is something you, we probably have to have a larger room to have a public meeting with all stakeholders. But again, at least we have some.
You gotta start.
You gotta start.
I will meet with public safety, if that's what you want me to do next.
Well, I think it's certainly, uh, since they enforce, what that forces, definitely, you wanna meet with them and, and, uh, after that, we should probably look into the stakeholder meeting and, and, uh, uh, have that one and, and just, you know, get some input from, from all four sides of the square.
Sounds good. By the way, I understand we're gonna get white lights back.
Well, we, we, yeah, it's, it's been.
Which is great.
Brought up and, uh.
Working on it, that, that fight area, we're working on it. Okay, so it's one of the main street issues. So thank you for that. Anything else?
I don't think so, thanks.
Alright, thanks.
Well, thanks Greg. Are you ready, Randy, or the old Jew?
Yeah, sure. I don't, I only have a couple things. I've just got the claims there for three seventy-five oh eighty-one oh three. Those are in your mailboxes.
Not much out of the ordinary areas there, just basic expenses. I didn't see anything notable at all. Oh, what's this thing? Two Traffic Solutions. Randy, I, I, can I ask you, where are you at, Randy? What, what? All Traffic Solutions, is that our stop, our, our speeding?
That's the speeding laws.
Yeah. Uh, they charge us fifteen hundred dollars. What, is that just like a reporting or annual?
That's the reporting annually.
Annually?
Yeah, you guys, uh, I brought that to you a couple months ago, that they were gonna do that, and you, you voted to continue it.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I moved approved.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
The only other thing I had on there was, um, I missed the separate internet at the plant when I was asking for the approval to get, um, Bloomingdale at a lower rate than AT&amp;T. So I just wanted to make sure I included the utility plant in that as well.
I'm sure you can include the utility plant in Bloomingdale.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Cindy, who's Cindy?
Now she was getting her root canal, I was getting my toothbrush.
Oh, you guys are having a fun day.
It is the wrong news.
Okay.
Two wisdom teeth.
Yeah.
I'm not so smart.
Um, Jeff, if you don't care, I wanna jump ahead of you and see if Randy wants to go.
I got new business. Can I do new business?
No.
It's short. It's short.
It's never short.
Cindy's not here, so.
Well, you're okay.
Do you have new business?
Well, Steve and I went to the, uh, uh, West Central Saw Waste District meeting a couple weeks ago, and they gave out their annual report. I think I gave everyone that was not at that, were on that board a copy of. It, it's just fascinating, amazing how much, uh, waste they collect in our little county, um. You know, last June twenty-twenty-one, they collected seven thousand seven seventy-six pounds of electronics. And as a side note, this year Electronic Waste Day is at the Fairgrounds again on six eighteen of twenty-twenty-two.
I know why that was, Randy. Everybody got stimulus checks.
Oh, got new stuff.
We're working from home.
TV file?
So yeah, and in September, they had the Tox Away Day. They, they, it's just amazing, the numbers. Three hundred sixteen vehicles, twenty-four thousand pounds of tires, ten thousand pounds of plants, and ten thousand pounds of electronics again, fifty-seven pounds of medicine. I mean, it's just, it's just amazing what they collect. And you know, every, every week, they pick up the dumpsters out there for the, I know for the cardboard, and it's really a, a nice service that, uh, underappreciated pretty much, I think, but, uh, yeah, so I just gave one of these to everybody and, um, that's all I had. Steve was throwing in any, coffee was good.
Coffee was excellent.
Tote of coffee, I believe, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's worth going back for.
Yeah.
And, and I tried to, I looked up the cost of that coffee. Very expensive.
Is it?
Very.
It says you can't get it anymore.
I know. Says you used to buy it at Walmart, but they don't have it at the.
Okay. David?
That it?
That's it.
Randy?
Seven new additional baskets and order down to receive a seventy-five hundred dollar grant from Park County Community Foundation. That brings the, the total plus the six that you'd already purchased and one that the prosecutor bought. Um, we've got, um, two more that I'm seeking still, so, um, we have a, another application into Marathon Pipeline Company, which operates pipeline near to us that we have to respond to. And they have grant opportunities on their website, so I've applied to them. And we have another application out to a different source for twelve new active shooter kits. They have two in, in each vehicle.
What the heck's an active shooter kit?
That is a, uh, uh, those are heavy rifle plates, so we're standing.
Oh, okay.
And it's a, it's a standalone thing that a guy can just throw on if, you know, if, uh, a couple of guys happen to show up off duty and don't have their gear with them, they can grab one of these out and they'll have some protection. It also adds protection to the officers if they put them on, but the ones we currently have are now coming up on them being outdated and they are, uh, but the newer ones are lighter in weight and, um, they're easier to wear because they're lighter in weight and they offer more protection. But they also have a fifteen-year warranty on them instead of five, so they're, they're making newer, better materials. So that's what those are. The new hire process is going better than expected. Actually, um, the police commission, uh, approved that we made a conditional offer employment to Hannah Gentile of Rockville. We made a conditional offer in front of Hannah Gentile of Rockville, uh, she lives there, corner of Shadland and Harrod Avenue. I made an appointment for her physical and psychological with the Public Safety Medical and they made the appointment for last Friday, so. Got right in on it and, uh, I did the overnight online request and they got right on it. So our, our previous complaints about it taking so long must have been heard. You know, it probably wasn't just us complaining about it. They also told us we will have the results in twelve days from the date of her appointment, so that's, that's a good thing too. Now I just have those, her and that new reserve girl. To get them best and I, I think I've got a tentative coverage to pay for those. Officers were asking about the buyout of their comp time or some other comp time that we discussed at the end of last year. We just hadn't heard any more about it and didn't know if that was still an option, they were just wanting some update on it.
Yeah, it's still on the, on the, on the plate, shall we say, uh, we, uh, we're gonna use some of that, uh, what do they call it, the?
ARS.
Rescue money, uh, I think we use that to pay out that two thousand, some of that to the two thousand year and stuff too.
You can only pay the comp time during the period of time.
That they work.
Right.
Yeah, during that, uh, March twentieth through whatever. Uh, when do we get another distribution for that, do you know?
It's in May or June.
May? Uh, so, yeah, we definitely want to do that, uh, we, uh, just, Randy's been busy with year end and, uh, three-year audit going on and, uh.
I understand.
We just haven't got the information together yet, but it's, it's coming.
Had to purchase two new fire extinguishers today and, uh, trailer hits us for the new vehicles, but, uh, it's just a sleeve that fits in there. Um, I have a couple of trailers that we've used for large evidence gathering and those are my personal trailer. The town also has a couple of trailers we could use if need be. And the K nine units, uh, they sometimes use a trailer from the sheriff's office to haul training equipment around. Uh, I had to purchase some trim, hot trim, but, um.
Bowens, yeah, yeah, yeah. I know what you're talking about.
During the storm, we had snow blowing through the door, around the door, and I just noticed there wasn't any trim on there, so I bought, purchased some of that today. Between that and the fire extinguishers and stuff, there was a hundred and ninety-three dollars, so that receipt's just been turned in today. And I sent you guys an email about the body camera grant, it was submitted before the deadline last Friday. That I kinda feel like it's a crummy grant because if we already had purchased cameras. Then we're in considered second. Class funding, so if you don't have cameras at all, then they're gonna give you eight hundred dollars per officer. And, uh, those departments will get their money first. If there's any money left. Then the, uh, departments that have cameras will have the option to get the four hundred dollars per officer, full-time officer. So that's six officers, twenty-four hundred bucks that we would get and it's a kind of a twenty-five percent match, but. What that would mean is the cameras are four ninety-nine, we'd end up paying ninety-nine bucks a piece for them. And if we get that money, uh, those cameras would be put back on the shelf because our. Our maintenance program is up this year and. If, um, at year two and a half, they send us new cameras, I've still got two or three of those new cameras in the safe. We just haven't used them until one breaks and then we get one of those out and replace the ones that we have. And that's what we do with these cameras, if you want me to, uh, proceed with it. If you want me to cancel it, I can do that too. The police commission said they were, were supportive of it.
Don't mean talking six?
Yeah, so it's.
Six hundred dollars.
Six hundred bucks, yeah.
Yeah.
For twenty-four hundred dollars worth of cameras, well, I see. Three thousand dollars worth of cameras.
Yeah.
You guys wanna talk about it, or you wanna?
I brought it up at the last meeting, but I didn't really get an answer of what you wanted me to do, so the grant deadline was last Friday, so I went ahead and filed it. I can cancel it if you want me to, or.
They come in handy when you, uh. Have, have, uh, uh, yeah, I mean, you need them, you need them. Anybody else?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Uh, there's been a camper that people have been inhabiting on nine oh one East High Street and a violation was issued to those folks. On the fourteenth, um, of this month and with the help of, um, town attorney, we figured out we can get it. Removed if it's not corrected within a certain amount of time, so we'll get that, uh, addressed here for the end of the week. Couple of things I didn't have on the report, and I just remembered that I attended a open house for a high-tech crime unit at Indiana State University today. Uh, the Indiana Prosecuting Attorney Council has funded this, uh, high-tech crime unit. They will do all of our, uh. Video, audio, cell phones, computer downloads, they'll give us all those reports that we need. That we've had trouble finding places to do or we have to wait on the state police to do before. The Indiana Prosecuting Attorney is now funding this at, um, Indiana State University, I guess there's ten satellite places around the state. And ISU's one of them, and they will be servicing eight counties surrounding Vigo. They have student interns that are, that do the work, but they've all been deputized as investigators for the prosecutor's office. So there's no chain of evidence questions, they've all been vetted by the sheriffs and police departments down there at Terre Haute. And, uh, I think it's gonna be a valuable service to us, things that we haven't been able to, to get done before. Also, the gun permit money from the state, uh, since they canceled the cost for gun permits and they may cancel gun permits altogether, I don't know. But, uh, we were able to submit a claim to the state for, uh. The amount of money that we collected in twenty twenty and that was, uh, twenty-eight hundred and sixty dollars and we received that finally. So that can go towards our firearms training. Uh, I don't know what they plan on funding that in the future. I don't know, we may end up having to find our own sources for that training. We do still have our other training fund, but that comes out of tickets and, and, um. It can be used for law enforcement training also, but it doesn't generate as much as this did. And that's all I have.
Okay, any questions? You wanna jump in there?
I'm good. So the next small claims day is March first, uh, we have court that day, ordinance violations are March twenty-second. Um, as far as ordinance, uh, Randy and I have been working together on one as far as fees for police services. Randy gave me his feedback on that, so we should have that for the next meeting to present to you all. Uh, we also did file three new ordinance violations since our last meeting. And my understanding is that we may have a few others that are coming my way, so, um.
The, the shame of this one at nine oh one East High is one we'd cited before. And now it's a different family members come in and cleaned up part of it, so I, I, we thought we were getting some improvements there, but. Apparently living in a camper and just cleaning up a rental house.
So that, our stat, our ordinance doesn't address the camper part of it as far as removal, it's a violation of our ordinance. The Indiana Code indicates, it's a violation of Indiana Code actually also, and under Indiana Code, it can be removed. Within ten days of notice, so hopefully they'll move it before then, um, but that's what I have to report.
Okay. You have anything Troy, while you're here? No, nothing?
What we had on that box? Well. You what now?
Bids for blower, new blowers and all that.
Did we have an inspection out there recently? Where was that inspection? Did we have an inspection somewhere, some utility? No? What did I see? I saw, I saw an email from somebody, we passed.
Oh, that is IDM.
IDM, for which?
It's all the water.
Water?
The last thing I remember is the water tower, but that's.
Yeah, they just are slow sending out.
Oh, they're just, okay, 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 um, what about our gearbox thing we ordered for the, the?
It was all on Jeff's update, I think.
Oh, it's that?
Six weeks, about six more weeks.
And they're still waiting on a price for rebuild.
Did you guys ever find out whether we could get rebuilt or?
Yeah, we got, we contacted another guy, a company out of Evansville, they're actually supposed to come out this week and take a look at it, uh, too. Cause they think they can possibly rebuild it, but he told us the same thing, he goes, I'm gonna tell you right now, you're ten to twelve weeks on parts. And it's just like the, the blower, we got quoted, I think it's, what was it, twenty-two weeks out. So it's one of those things we just.
But then, I mean, I know he probably didn't tell you anything, but did they think that that would be a little? Expense-wise, would that be a little better off rebuilding or?
Yeah, they thought, I mean, it would definitely be cheaper to re, to rebuild.
You're up Jeff. Alrighty, I have a big long list you got there. Yeah, I'll try to research pretty quick. Uh, our community crossings grant, pending award notification, which should be around the end of March, we'll find out how we do on that. Uh, number two, info, our pole replacements are ongoing and I attached a list of what all they've got going on for this, uh.
Quarter?
This quarter. I'll tell you where they're gonna be doing some stuff at. Uh, cemetery mowing, I sent out an email on that and just let you know, I spoke to several local vendors and nobody's really interested in. Uh, taking on mobile work, I did talk with, uh, Billy Bettis this week and he's gonna try to give me an estimate on that.
Well, it just doesn't look. Yeah.
Yeah, uh, given what, uh, P and B told me that they turned the quote in for a few years ago. Yeah, but I don't know what to do as far as, you know, we're gonna have to be running three or four guys. Flat out on the week, you're, you know, worried about getting help on that. So it'll be difficult, uh, at best, keeping up on things. Signatory resolution, uh, have that, if you want to pass that down to Nick. That allows Dave to sign end doc contracts, uh, on his own. Instead of us having to get five different signatures and, um, blue ink and all of our yada, yada, yada stuff. End doc would, uh, suggest we do that.
I'll make a motion for that.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Project status, our water project. As per Cindy's direction, I attended a required IFA webinar to qualify for state revolving funding opportunities. I'll make sure I do that annually, so we don't miss out on it. Forty-one North, uh, sewer expansion pending right-of-way issues, no changes there.
Okay.
I, I can comment on that, uh, I've received back the specs on the Gooch part of that and will be forwarded on and then. Uh, my belief is that he wants to have a meeting with us to go over it with our, uh, engineer. But I, I think that may be resolved hopefully, so.
So. Okay. Put it in layman's terms basically, what, what do we have going on?
Um, he made a counter offer to what the original, the, the counter that the town had made to him. That our engineering firm has gone through and made a recommendation, they think that that could be a feasible offer.
Okay.
Board was willing to entertain it.
Okay.
The counter offer was sixteen thousand, which was something he had said to us previously.
Okay.
But the engineering firm sent me some information, it came to costs involved in litigating, based on their belief, cause we're gonna have to have three more appraisals. Plus whatever the costs are.
So, well, uh, if the board as a whole agrees to his, his, his request for compensation. Then it's just a matter of him getting together with the engineer or he?
He wants to ask some specific questions to the engineer to understand how.
Well, yeah, the reason is that, I mean, we have a timeline here, timeframe, I mean, how soon can we get this done?
It, I mean, if you guys vote to accept that pending, you know, him meeting with the, the, uh, engineer. I mean, then it's just a matter of scheduling a meeting with the engineer and somebody from the board.
So we can make that decision tonight, I guess.
You can.
That's where, that's where I'm going.
The board as a whole will not be.
Well, it's fine, all I care is we have a majority, I mean, this project has to get going or keep going.
Right.
So what's the offer?
Sixteen thousand was the counter offer, um, and.
Well, whatever it is, it is, I'm moving, I'm ready to move, I want this project to go.
Indicated that we'd do three more appraisals, which in researching, if we're going the other route, which would be litigation. That is true under the statute, we're gonna need three more appraisals.
So I want your rest of the board thinking.
Do you wanna, well, hang on a second.
Okay.
I mean, so tell me this again, as far as.
Sorry, David.
The engineering.
That's why we do this.
He wants to talk to engineers before.
Before signing any type of agreement, but if we were willing to do sixteen thousand and let him talk to the engineers and. He is happy with the discussion, he will sign an agreement, is kinda where that was.
Well.
But that goes back to his stipulations, right? Well, I, I think he just, I talked with his attorney and his attorney indicated that he just had some questions. It's no longer stipulations as to redo this, redo that, do this, do that, it's.
He wants to know how deep the line is, I believe.
Or what the grade is, or different things of that nature, like how, how the specifics are.
Well, let me ask this, if we agree to the sixteen and we get a majority vote tonight, I mean, he still has to. That won't hurt us anyway.
No, because you have to actually formally sign the contract, hand it over, and I, I would just put it with a stipulation. Actually, I guess what I'd say is give Dave the ability to sign, if that's what the board wants, but stipulate it on there being no other stipulations. Meaning it's just, we're doing it, here's, here's the money.
If, yeah, if we agree to this, this is a done deal.
Right, that, we're not agreeing to any limitations or things of that nature, I guess is what I would tell you.
Okay, now, what?
What does it cost us if we go ahead with litigation?
Um.
Time.
Let me see.
Understand, but it's gotta be some money involved.
Well, so, I mean, you have appraisal values, let me see if I can find what the engineer had sent me.
What's the litigation rate? I mean, it's quite expensive.
Well, I, and I haven't even bid you guys anything like that, I mean.
Yeah.
That wouldn't be under contract, it'd be.
He would have to pay this cost because he was loose.
Well, maybe, um. It's, you know, I, I really don't like talking about litigation in public meetings, you know.
Probably not a good idea.
Um, but as far as the offer was sixteen, the engineering firm seemed to think that. You know, with the cost of litigation, with the cost of three more appraisals, uh, their recommendation, well, their opinion was. Was in the realm of possibility, so, let me see if I can find this.
Well, as our counts, what are you, uh, what's your recommendation?
Time is, time is an issue, um, I, I know that they're wanting this project done quickly, um. I, I don't think, when you look at cost involved, I don't think you're looking at, you're not saving a whole lot of money going the litigation route, if any. It kinda depends on what happens, you know. Court orders mediation, court, you actually have to try the case, it takes several days, I mean, there's a lot of variables that go into cost of litigation.
The other issue is the price, if everything's going up, it can continue to go up, you put it off for another year, who knows what things will cost you a year from now. Uh, just think what's gonna go last a couple of years.
I mean, I don't have any issue trying the case, trying that or going forward to court and I, I think we ultimately can be successful. But at what cost?
Like, this has been on the books for six or seven years, it's.
I mean, if he'll sign off on it, you know, within the next ten days or so versus.
Well, can we put, can we? How can we, how can, how can we?
You could approve it pending him signing within ten days and, I mean, you could put a time limit on it.
Let's do it, I don't want.
Structure point said that they, if we get this, though, it's a go for this spring for construction, do we know that that's a guarantee?
They haven't, I, I didn't talk to them anything about that, we just talked about strategy of mediation.
I'm not, I'm not gonna.
So it could be an install.
Pay and then have it not even done this year.
Well.
I mean, I, I, that wasn't the center of my conversation.
They wanted to let bids this May, I, I don't have that thick of a folder in front of me, uh.
I guess the diff, my, I guess my recommendation to you is the difference in cost of litigation versus the difference in paying him and being done with. It's not gonna be the deciding factor and it, time would be, in my opinion. I mean, if you're talking a couple of thousand dollars versus six months of delay in the project.
I understand that, but I'd still like to know.
Well, I'm tired of talking about it, I moved, we do it, he's got ten days to sign it, and doesn't, we'll take him to court. If he can't be satisfied with the engineers, I'm tired of screwing around with it. If he can't be satisfied with the engineers, I'm tired of screwing around with it, so, anybody wanna?
And the structure point's ready to go then, I mean, that's the hinge right there, right, I mean, that's.
I, they, the last I saw their reports, unfortunately got nobody here, probably Cindy know better off the top of her head, but yeah, they, they.
If, if, if we take care of this, they're ready to let the bid, I mean, they're ready to go.
They wanna let bids this spring or early summer is my understanding.
But you don't have that information.
That, that's not what, I've been talking with Skip and we've been talking about eminent domain and timeframes and things like that. But we haven't been talking about the project itself.
What do you know, Jeff?
Yeah, I, I, I'm of the opinion that they were shooting for this spring, but it all comes down to what they do with the right away. So, I can't even say.
Well, this'll take care of the right away situation.
I, I can't say that they're a hundred percent design, I, I don't know that for sure.
But I mean, if, if that's you guys' counter to his counter, I can relay it to his attorney tomorrow, try to line up.
I got a motion, I need some.
No, I mean, is there a second?
About to jump in on this or not?
I'll find out for you tomorrow whether they're out on design and when their let date is.
What do you think?
I mean, I think, I think Structure Point will take care of business, but I'd like.
Why do, I have confidence in them, moving along, but this is not going to allow them to do so.
So if Structure Point says no, we can't do it until?
I really don't care what structure, right now, this is la, next, one pro, one step at a time.
Yeah, but if we heal the problem with him and Structure Point says, oh, we're not ready yet, it's probably gonna be another six to eight months before we're ready. There's no point in paying them.
Well, okay, it's a legitimate point, but to my knowledge, best of my knowledge, at this point, they wanna let bids this year, they wanna let bids.
So is that gonna be in your motion, that if Structure Point's ready to go?
If you wanna throw it in there, we'll, I'll throw it in there.
Did you see where I'm coming from?
I do, I, I, I just am fairly com, very confident that they're ready to go, the right away issue, this is. This is the last one, the design should be done for Pete's sake, I've been working on this thing for years, uh. Yeah, uh, yeah, we have, but, uh, again, you know, okay, motion, ten days for, for the other party to, to, to sign off on it. Get with our engineers and be satisfied and, and, and also with the understanding that Structure Point is ready to go, let bids. This first half this year.
I mean, you can give it to Brian Hood tomorrow, right?
Yeah, I'll try and find his contact right now.
If that's your motion, I will second that motion.
Okay.
Do you get a favor?
With no stipulation, no additional stipulation, it's just the cash price period.
Right, yeah.
Because I, uh, that's my thing, why is he gonna meet with the engineers, cause he's not gonna get anything out of it. He's gonna come back with wanting some.
Right, and that, that's why I think you ought to put that stipulation, is because it's, here's your money, you can meet with them, but we're not stipulating. Cause last time he was before us, he had all these other things he wanted.
Right, it's just his project, that's it.
He wants us to wait for him to redo a pond or something like that, or things like that, and, I mean, that, that would, that'd be years. So that, that's why, I think that's a good idea. But I, I'm forwarding the documentation to his attorney right now as to the engineering on it though, so. Okay, he'll have it tomorrow.
Okay. So, all in favor?
If he doesn't sign in ten days, that's it.
Well, ten days, I guess we have to.
I'd just say that's wrong. Court then, I mean, at that point.
Yeah.
So I have it, is he signing within ten days, sixteen, and Structure Point's ready to move forward by springtime, providing it.
First half this year, bids will be let, we'll let it in June thirty.
Okay.
And, and I don't know the answer as to that, that's not something I can.
Bids left, that doesn't guarantee construction, so then we have paid him and.
Oh, well.
For this project, are you kidding me?
I mean, if he reneges on this, then we'll just.
Well, we had no choice, we'll pursue the other option, uh. Yeah.
Do you guys feel good about it, I know Liddy doesn't, you're, you'll.
No, I'm just all warming fuzzy.
Gotta make some mo, movement.
Yeah.
Opposed?
Me, four one.
Okay, now, yeah.
Motion carries, correct?
Okay, yeah, message, probably. To see where they were out on the, uh, design, let date, and we'll just proceed for construction, so I'll pass that information on to you when I get it. Uh, South Market Street, uh, movement there, letters sent out to homeowners regarding staking for parcels. Uh, this week, and staking should take place within the next two weeks, according to Kent. The environmental document has been received and approved by, uh, the state, so that one's under the table.
Environmentals are done, but we gotta.
Environmentals are done, but we gotta kick them in the butt about the right way.
Yes, yes.
So that's where we're on South Market.
Just, so our bodies, I mean, there's possibly a funding issue with this, so we.
Yep.
Yeah, well, what's the timeline, I heard something about this a while back, there's a timeline, what, was it, there's so many years, we have to start this project?
Yeah, well, they've gotta be able to utilize the right away money within a certain frame time.
Okay.
Or it becomes dead.
Well.
We can't use it.
Well, we can't use it, so it's back in our pocket.
Yes.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah, no, that's not, and it comes down to, to them getting their butts in gear, so. Uh, Jefferson Street project, I'm meeting with Tommy Early from IMPA, uh, tomorrow also, Joe Holcomb. Uh, ref, reference life holes for that project now. Uh, I think specs from, uh, Structure Point will be the metal poles we have down through Howard. And, uh, Howard Street, and also what's scheduled to go into market, but, uh. I'd like to at least take a look at aluminum poles to see if they're, they're similar in design, uh, if they're cost efficient. I think you'd get a heck of a lot of more life out of the aluminum poles, but it may be cost prohibitive, I don't know, but I told him I'd like to run numbers on both.
And LEDs.
And LEDs, yes.
What did, uh, Cody come up with as far as metering water on that?
Uh, he had, uh, one, oh, wait a minute, let me tell you this. Metering water.
I mean, for our hookups.
Oh, yeah. I don't, I don't know if there really is a good way.
Well, it's why, I mean, I didn't know whether you guys wanted to do some kind of flat fee when it get to that point, I mean. Either way, I'd like to get, if, if we're gonna meter them, we need to be, we need to be looking into that now.
Cody's, Cody's biggest issue with that on the water was regarding backflows. And, and I, I don't know that there is a good workaround on that.
Well, the way to do the water, I would say you have one meter, if there's an event set up and any water used. Whoever organized the event would have to be charged and that passed on to the vendor setting up of whoever was set up to use water, I mean, that'd be simple enough. It's one fee to whoever the event sponsor is, say Main Street or Thirty-Six Saloon, or, uh, maybe Steve has something he wants to put together. But to that person would pay the water bill and they'd split amongst the people that they ran out to space to whatever. Yeah, that seems like a logical way, simple way.
What, what about the backflow issue though?
Well, I mean, there's backflow, their backflow preventers aren't anything new, I mean, you can get those on, on.
But, but by his, by Cody's reckoning, you have to have, uh, an annual review of backflow preventers. So we don't know that these vendors are actually getting that review done on their backflows.
Well, they're not gonna be, we aren't gonna put them on our end?
That's why I, I figured you'd have some kind of portals that would.
I figured we had them on our end.
No idea.
Well, we could stick with you, huh?
And another issue is, I, I mean, with water, you're gonna have gray water, so.
What are, what are you gonna do with it?
A lot of them, a lot of food vendors now have their own tanks.
Gray water tank.
It's electricity that I was more interested in really for this thing anyway.
So water is secondary, electricity is primary.
That'd be my, my, most people that set up for an event, just like they have in the square with the, they don't have water, but they, they really could use electricity. I don't know, is this my take on it? There you go, Steve, there goes the water.
There, there are a lot of garden hoses running across that lawn in there.
Well, okay, you're talking festival time?
Yeah.
Bridge Festival?
Well, I mean, that's what you were, I mean, alluding to, wasn't it, I mean.
Well, I wouldn't think so much in the bridge festival, I couldn't see us blocking that street during that time period, but this, you know, one day event on the street in a lot of towns. I usually don't see hoses out, I, I, I do see a lot.
Food vendors gonna need water.
Well, but though a food vendor.
Some of them have their own hot water tanks, I mean, it just depends on how nice the setup is.
I, 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 I.
More and more of them have their own tanks, but, um.
Yeah.
But yeah, a lot of them, I, I mean, we always check to make sure they've got a backflow preventer.
Yeah.
You look for a commercial grade hose with back.
Water'd be nice, I think electricity definitely was, is a must have.
Now, that brings up another question as far as, uh, looking at going underground with the electric. In the alley right there in Jefferson.
Right.
Uh, the east west alley. I'm gonna have Tommy Early, uh, take a look at that tomorrow, but, as, as I was out there the other day. There are AT&T poles that have all the AT&T lines on them.
Well, they'll have to make, we'll do something. I, they, 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 they contract out all that work and sometimes it's years where they get in there, but if they're in our way, we will, I don't know what the law is, Nick. But if we have utility that's in our way of a project, say like AT&T, what can we do with it?
They're in our right away?
Yeah.
Uh, it's our right away, but I'd wanna see a written agreement if we have one with them though, before we start tinkering with them.
Well, we just can't cut them, but, uh. Uh, yeah, it's a good point, we, they are there, we're gonna have to deal with it.
Just tell you from my experience, I'll be there for the next ten years.
Well, which project are we talking about?
Jefferson Street.
All you're on hold with them to talk about.
The alley.
It'll be the alley behind Thirty-Six.
And the power poles, there's, there's AT&T lines on those.
Okay.
Hey, Nick, just, just one, in my experience when I was in business down south. Comcast, Verizon, whoever, they're not a utility, they're a convenience. So, I mean, if they were in the right way for our water or utilities and in our, in our, in our developments. Get out of the way or, or, or lose it.
They generally have to have some type of contractual interest with us, or they have to at least been given verbal or permission to be in there. Before we have a duty to them.
Do we have any contracts with, with any of these people?
Not to my knowledge, they just kinda willy nilly have been putting things in the right way for decades.
AT&T can hold us up for years if they want to, I mean, if they wanna be that way.
What I would say is maybe we give them a red notice that we're gonna, we're taking it down within such and such period of time and.
They're in our right away.
I'll give them a wake up call, give me the, give me the bolt cutter.
But I know a lot of communities, like he said though, do just do what they wanna do, don't worry about it, but I'd say give them a red notice. That we're gonna be moving, one more time comes on it.
Yeah, it's a very short timeframe and how the word goes into response is going to be, uh.
And who in the hell do I even send the letter to?
Right.
Uh, board of directors, I don't know.
Charlie Gossett.
Charlie Gossett.
He works for AT&T.
He, uh, that's good for him.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
But yeah, doggone, that is gonna be an issue, and they, 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 yeah, they take years to get their stuff taken here, uh.
They don't pay us.
See if Tommy has any ideas on what, he's right across this. It's out of my ballpark, that's for sure.
Generally, you'll have their attention if you move their stuff.
I just don't wanna get my butt over in there.
Oh, you have our permission to do what's needed.
Okay, uh.
Oh, the charging station?
Yes, um.
I'm sorry, I gotta, I gotta hit, water extension.
Yep, water extension, uh, because I got, do I have the? Okay, that's standard on the Jackson Jacks. Uh, Jefferson, I'm talking about.
Cindy.
Any of you guys wanna meet with, uh, me and Tommy and Joe tomorrow, let me know, uh, if you'd like them right out there. Jackson Borhees, uh, Roger will be able to meet with the, uh, uh, store board next meeting. Kinda give an update on that, and he'd be happy to do so, water extension east project. I think Cindy's working on her application for funding. Jackson Jacks building, we address it tonight, we have, I'll come back with, uh, recommendation, guys can set a special meeting. To, uh, review and approve. Beechwood Park Pool House renovation, uh, sent out bids advertised, uh, last week, actually Brandy did. And I've already had, uh, one response to that. Uh, let's see. Water remain, water repair on Martin Street and hydro replacements by U Mac, they're looking at March. I'm getting started on those. Clarifier project at Wasteware Treatment Plant, we just talked about that too with, uh, uh, Troy. Still waiting on rebuild numbers there. Blower replacement project, I do have a quote from Sycamore Engineering on just the, uh, labor side and the connection side. And it was just under three thousand dollars, it's two thousand nine seventy-eight, uh. We'll wait till we get the blower quotes and we'll probably just do that all as one package, gonna want to let you know what the labor end was looking at.
Yeah, if you got the blower code, it's, it's forty-four thousand.
Okay, forty-four.
What's that for?
Blower?
The blower.
The blower.
Do you know if I have a copy of that?
I don't, I thought, I said, if, uh, or.
If, if I do, I apologize, Troy.
I'll bring it to you.
Anything breaks.
I'll bring that to the next board meeting then.
No, I haven't yet, you gave me permission to.
Roof repair at the Beechwood Park Pool House, the, uh, park board requests me to get estimates from Levi Fisher for a pitched metal roof. Haven't heard back from Levi yet, but expect to hear back from him at some point in time. Lights and crossarms at ball fields, uh, Brett's of the opinions that, that if we're gonna have the, the crossarms down. And replace them, we better look at replacing the lights, I think that's gonna be a pretty pricey undertaking. Cause lights are crazy expensive, uh, but we'll do whatever you guys want us to do.
When's the last time those were replaced though?
I don't know that they have.
I don't, I know.
I don't remember.
I was eighteen years ago, I think I was on, I know at that time they hadn't been.
Well, I, it's longer than that.
Yeah.
I was on them back as well.
Also drainage on Butler, I have the ball fields, we're waiting for them to kinda get that marked for us and we'll trench it out for them. Beechwood Park Pavilion painting, uh, I looked into the federal, uh, HPF grant application. Oh my God, folks, let's not use federal money for, for that.
For what?
Federal, uh, historical preservation fund grant application. It's a fifty fifty match and it's.
You have to sell one of them.
A hundred percent paperwork. Uh, you think indoc's bad?
How much is it gonna cost to paint the pavilion?
I'm thinking about seven.
Seven?
Yeah.
I have them like five settles.
That's having it cleaned, scraped, uh, treated with a, uh, water resistant base. Then overcoated with a high quality latex.
Are you guys gonna do that?
No.
We'll put it out.
No, I, it's one of those things I'd love to have time to do in the summer, but.
You're gonna be waiting.
Yeah, uh, well, and they don't want me weed eating either, so I'm gonna be, you know, tracking this stuff down. Anywho, uh, what was next? I do have some, uh, quotes on decorative light replacements at Beechwood Park, we have a couple of the lights, they're broken. Needing new globes, yeah, so.
You mean the ones on the, the road?
On the concrete roads, yeah, that have been.
You know, I think it's in late nineties in Jackal.
Carolyn Wetherman and Brandy was on the park board.
That was a while back.
We're gonna look at changing those out to LED also while we're doing it, so.
She just replaced like the glow part?
Cause they don't make that one anymore.
Uh, new hope, still need to hook up two more water meters, there's one transformer left we need to hook up. And like, uh, one more sewer tap, I did have a discussion with a vendor today, and he was a little put out that he got a invoice on. Uh, for the water fixtures that we use to move the fire hydrant out of conflict with. Uh, South Market Street, we sent him an invoice on that, whether or not I could pay it, I don't know. Anything, um, Starkin, Virginia. Uh, price excavating, did a nice job and, and that was a muddy mess, if you've been by there, there's ruts this deep. There were places where he had to literally hoe himself out of that little gully down in there. And, um, normally he would not leave it looking like that, but he was having problems with his excavator, the filter was clogging up on him. He better, barely had enough power to get it back up on the truck.
Temperature probably affected the diesel.
Yeah, I, I don't know, but he will be back to clean that up and reseed it to everybody's satisfaction, uh.
Kind of money we talked about?
You know, I don't have any idea, my guess, my guess is about thirty-five, that's just ballpark.
There, that, that was my optimism for the year.
I don't think.
But I tell you, Glenn's crew, uh, and, and it just happened that he had no work scheduled for that day. And he'd given all of his guys off, I called him in the early morning and he was there two hours later with full crew. I called him in the early morning and he was there two hours later with full crew, so I did appreciate that from him. Anywho, busy week, we just do busy week this way, uh, this week also, so, any questions?
No, thanks, Jeff. So, yeah, that there, that one point two trillion infrastructure bill passed last November included seven point five for electric, infrastructure, car crap, whatever. Two point five of that was for, basically it sounds like charging. Uh, but it's through the DOT, of course, that's federal, but there's certainly a bunch of money out there sloshing around for, heck, sounds like if we could get, we could do the whole lot of charging stations.
Well, in 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 my discussion with, uh, Dirk about the charging stations, he gave me a, a vendor's name that he's worked with, which were Charge Point.
Yeah.
And, um, I'm gonna reach out to them and and see if they can't do that presentation for us.
Yeah, I mean, I just find a company that, uh, would help us go through the process, uh, cause I'm sure it's complicated. Okay.
So we're looking at that, at the Jacks Building and the depot, right?
I think so, yeah.
And and are you guys just talking numbers? Are you talking about a couple of each place or maybe just one at the depot?
I would think maybe one at the depot and two at the.
I figured, I, two and two, but I mean, whatever.
Yeah, the question is, what kind of electricity do you need to them is the question.
I I think we have ample to the place, especially.
Well, you can put them at your house, so I'm assuming two hundred amp will carry, gonna take care of it.
Cora has a test one, she just runs a cora out.
She does. Well, it's your daughter, actually, I think.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But I've seen her.
Funny story right now, I'll tell you something. Uh, anyway, okay, Jeff, wow, you're almost getting over to the second page. So I I have to ask, if, if it came out, on the thirty-first.
They they had whole fella reported and out.
With an older guy.
They went in and, uh, Cade said that, uh, he went in, he looked around, he couldn't find anything wrong with the electric part of it. And he got to talking to the old fella and, uh, he looked over and he just happened to see this power strip and it didn't have light on. Cade walked over, boop, and on comes his TV.
Oh, jeez.
So.
Okay. Well, where are we at?
Well, anybody have anything to say out there? Kevin?
Oh, I'm good.
Troy, I know you, Randy.
Yeah, after your email then, not about the alley situation, where one of the officers went by and talked to him and asked him to, uh, not block the alley. They're pretty upset about it, but, um, they still contend it's private property and Nick, we're looking at it, trying to nail down that it's town's alley and, uh.
Do we have any utilities running through that alley?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's power poles. And like on my side, that used to be an alley through there too, on the other side of my fence. That was an alley down through there. It's just, that's what I was told, mhm. So, I mean, it's all grass.
I'm looking at the plat, but, um, once it's an alley and it's town property, it's always an alley in town property unless the town moves to vacate the alley. We actually just, we're on the other side of that litigation up in Perrysville a couple of years back and there's clear case law that says that. So if it was an alley at some point and the town took no action to vacate it, even if there are trees growing through it, it is still an alley.
Mm-hmm.
So, so we don't have to actively maintain it. We don't have to rock it. We don't have to even drive it. As long as we haven't taken action to vacate it, it's an alley. It's what the case law says.
And that was an issue twenty years ago, I know.
Right.
I was gonna say, uh, uh, say the less of the alley that runs behind, uh, Dale Barnes's, uh, uh, house that runs all the way clear through where old, uh, Hoot McGarner used to live. There's traders parked in it, there's trucks parked in it, there's limbs grilled over, and it's it's an alleyway and and, uh, if I had to get a tree guy to come through, permission to come through somebody else's yard, we couldn't get the the truck through the alley.
Once it's an alley, it's owned by the town. We don't have to maintain it for it to stay ours. The town owns it.
Just keep that dog tied close enough.
But I I haven't looked at the plat to verify that yet, so.
Every time I see it, it's loose.
They said they're coming to see you. They couldn't make it to the night's meeting.
Okay, um, well, and I I guess Mike had told them previously it was an alley, so I assume he probably researched it before he said that, so, but I'll look into it.
I was just, I mean, I don't see anybody else blocking alleys.
Is it the north end that they roped off or?
South end.
But I think part of the argument they were trying to make is that nobody's maintaining it and that's not what the burden is. I mean, if it was the towns, it's always the towns.
Yeah, but when the road was closed from Starkin, Virginia, so people were probably gonna go through there, touring around it.
But I I'll try to explain that, but I'll I'll also just make sure we're correct.
All righty, thank you, Randy. Bruce, Troy, Chris, nothing? Well, I would entertain, oh, you got?
I just wanna share one thing.
Okay.
Um, I received at the end of the day today, so I just printed it off. I haven't communicated with them, but if you remember a meeting or two ago, Melinda Duckett with Purdue came, Marion Blaine was here with Park Alliance Trails. They just at the end of the day today sent, um, she forwarded me the letter they sent to Melinda saying that they reviewed the application for the twenty twenty-two bicycle and pedestrian planning grant program and that we were chosen for funding. So they'll draft a grant agreement immediately and get in touch with us soon to gather information, get a schedule and a kickoff meeting, and the amount of the grant was awarded was the maximum of twenty thousand dollars. So I'll forward that to everybody in the park board so that they'll have that information too moving forward, um, from when Melinda and Marion were here.
Okay.
On a plane and wanted the town's blessing on that, so that was good news.
Yay.
Can I make my first turn, Charles?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.